It's one o'clock, service meeting, a special service meeting. I want to talk to the President, Dan Lightwall, Doug Foote, Andy Schock and myself.
Do you want to read item one, just for the record?
A special service committee called by myself and committee members for Dan Lightwall, Doug Foote and Andy Schock to discuss lock a water line expansion. And that was one P M. I had called it indoor. And I guess what reason we got Lynn here is he was going to basically inform the committee of what we had talked about thus before, but this was for information to bring everybody up to some on the water line expansion everywhere.
Go down here. Basically, I was asked to look into possible service areas for the city of Visaris to expand their water system. We've had numerous requests and in my capacity with the county commissioners also being county sanitary engineer, I've received requests on Parsha Road, Mount Zion Road and other areas of Broken Sword where wondering if the city could extend services and the city is very interested at this point. It was brought to me, so we developed this map. The green was kind of just the general outline of the service area. Anything in between could also be added, but this was kind of the focus. We have individual number of homes shown on the map in the reaches so that if you wanted to see how many homes you could pick up in a certain area, you could. Total in the green area is approximately 1,100 homes. Believe you have around 5,000 customers today, 5500, something like that.
Fifty-five hundred, yeah.
Fifty-five hundred on that. And this heavier green line is actually the watershed line between the Sciota and the Sandusky River. Just, that's the hump intent, so to speak. So we developed this map. We did put it through on a hydraulic analysis and felt that we know we could service these areas with a six inch line and then it would be based on what council decides the type of service. We were talking rural water service, not fire protection service. You know, you could have very limited amount of fire protection with that. Part of the problem, if somebody wonders why not increase the pipe sizes and go with fire protection, two main reasons. Increasing in pipe size is obviously an increase in cost, but one of the more important things that we're concerned about is a test that is run by the water department for trihalo methane, T H M's. It's a carcinogenic back growth, whatever, I'm not a biologist on that, but it's a function of organic material in your water reacting with chlorine and setting in the pipes for a long duration of time. So if you have bigger pipes, you have more storage, you've got longer detention times, which is detrimental to that result. And you actually in your new water plant, put an extra degree of treatment on there with a carbon filter, I believe, to help knock that down. But this would, when you're responsible for it and some of the rural water people with their long lines and actually having to feed more chlorine, if halfway down the road and type of stuff, have to deal with that issue a little more. So we are trying to, the main goal as this was reviewed, is to provide safe drinking water to the people in the shaded green area. That's the primary goal. The volunteer fire departments, they have set up ways, they're fighting the fires now, they're doing it out. You know, like I said, we probably have a couple flushing hydrants, maybe strategically positioned that's on the water line going to Winford. You know, there's a long way between hydrants on the Lincoln Highway and they were put there for flushing and also an air release. On any of the hills, you get, you'll get an air bubble in the line and that air bubble will restrict the flow of water through that pipe, so you have to let that air bubble escape. So that's one of the reasons those hydrants are there. You can put automatic air releases in and then typically they'll get a piece of debris in them or something and then they leak and so we've found that it's just as easy to have something manual and if there's an issue, you go out. It's not something that happens with any frequency. So basically, yeah, go ahead.
Being that they are flushing hydrants, would they be able to, I guess if they had to in an emergency type situation, would they be able to tie into them to use them to put a fire out?
If that's what you want, when we can put in flushing hydrants, they don't necessarily have to be fire hydrants.
Right.
We did do that on the Lincoln Highway because that's a 12 inch line that the school was paying for for fire protection after they had their fire out at Winford years ago. And they put that in. On these, it wouldn't be as much. And the other, if you pull a fire flow, if the system isn't designed for it, we will lose our operating pressure. I don't have that designed in for four, 500 gallon a minute as of now. And that would be a decision of council and it can be done. It's just a function of money and then we want to look at that trihalo methane issue as well also. But it was not designed to do that and also trying to be competitive in pricing. There's four and two inch lines run north of us here. This is kind of the line that the northern rural water is already servicing. And they've got fours and twos and they put in exactly what's needed for domestic consumption only. So, but yeah, I did not figure that in. It could be, but that's your guys' decision at that point.
On that part of the discussion, is there any particular, I was just looking in terms of the concentrations of higher number of residences, is there any areas where it might make sense to target heavier line just near the town for those specific areas and then extend out further within there where line?
Yes.
Okay.
To answer that.
Do you have, I mean, can you kind of point out what your thoughts are?
Well, you know, if you want to look at growth, you know, you've got a concentration of homes in here.
Right.
You have a concentration of homes there. You have over 100 and another 50 getting there. You've got 200 going this way. You've got, and let's see, I have to add them, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80. You've got over 100, 150 homes going out that direction. But I know in this cluster here, I believe there was like 75 right there. So yeah, one of the, once you make the decision to do it, then it's who gets first, you know, the priorities. And I know it would be based a little bit on demand and, you know, there's some other items that you might want to consider, but yeah, that's.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of, considering that you've got some areas there quite close, it wouldn't be as long of a trip down the road to extend that.
To a bigger line out.
To them, but maybe not all the way out to the far reaches on the map.
Yeah, you've got a 12 inch line sitting there right now. So you're going to get good flows. You're going to get out of a six inch line, a few hundred gallon a minute. It's not like it's going to be a dribble of water if we run six inch. If we were really trying to tighten the noose on and going with the domestic, you could look at several with some four inch lines. I have a facilities that I operate that has actually right now 25 families and is fed off of a two inch line. And we have no problems with pressure and that's what we'd go. And when I was looking at these areas, there's a lot, once the water line goes by the property, it becomes a more desirable place to develop. And when we were looking at this, we were actually doubling the flow for growth, which to me, if you saw another thousand homes, we would all be just tickled and, you know, yeah. And, but we had some expansion capabilities put in. We weren't being too nearsighted about that. And like I said, we, where you get your eight inch lines and your, your 12 inch lines are obviously main feeders and we've got some of that here in town. These little blue lines are all your water lines in town that we've been putting. An eight inch line, you can get them like 1,000 gallon a minute. I asked the fire, you know, if they would fight a fire out there, they'd be using about 250 gallon a minute. And I sometime, I always liked when we get to the final, you know, end of the design, I always liked having the fire chief or the department present and to discuss these issues so everybody's on. I always liked, you know, obviously the administration and council, I like having the fire department, I like having the water department so everybody can understand the other guy's side. And then so you can be on the same team going forward and somebody saying, well, they should have put this size line in or I don't know why they did that, that's just creating a nightmare. I have in one community, we waste more water than we sell because the pipe line was sized for a big box, it didn't happen. And so you have to flush the line to keep your chlorine residuals up for disinfection but also to keep the water fresh so you don't have the trihalo methane issue. And it's flushed, like I said, more than what's used.
Will any of this require another tower?
Not this.
Okay.
Basically, everything is designed on your existing water towers. And also we have actually looked at, there's a water tower sitting here at North Robinson and a pump station that sits right here at the landfill road. And you can actually, well, the elevation of the water tower at Visaris is 1,150 is the elevation. The ground elevation is 1023. So the top of the water tower is 120 feet basically higher than what the ground elevation is there at Sulphur right now. And as you go this way, it's more advantageous to you because all the rivers and everything are flowing this way, so it's downhill. So that helps you. We did look at the possibility and if, when the lines get to this area, that we tap in, there's an eight inch line sitting here at 602 and the Lincoln Highway, that you could come up. The pump here would actually fills this water tower and that water tower is operated at a lower level than capacity by a long way. It's only about a third of the volume of water in that tower as it's capable of, which could supply additional pressure because the water tower at North Robinson, oh, that's county, is 1,233. So it's 50 and 23, 80, yeah, it's 83 feet higher in the area yet. So we could have additional capacity and then what we would do is put a couple, a valve here and then this would be on pressure here. If this ever became lower in pressure, this could open up and let that come back through. And that's actually how the county system is run. There's a valve here at the pump station, so this area here is on the water towers, about 85 customers. This is on city Visaris pressure and it's about 85 customers. But if we shut the water off here, I have a valve in the pump station that opens up and lets this come back and feed them. So when we had some outages and stuff like that, I never depressurized these 180 customers. So those are the type of things that you put in to do that. And they're not difficult to do. They're done a lot. A lot of places have two and three water pressure zones in a town. Mount Givney's got two and they went in and figured out wherever they were going to make it and put their regulator valves in and one tower is fed off, feeds one service area and the other tower feeds the other service area. That happens often. We're just small and we don't need that. Which is good.
I don't know what else to add.
Well, I was, I was just going to say, like, we talked about Nevada, if they, I guess my thought was that if they wanted fire protection out there, they could erect a tower and they could run, I mean, we could run water to their tower and then they could run.
Yeah, Nevada already has the tower and everything. They use about 40,000 gallons of water a day at Nevada. They have approximately 220 homes in Nevada. And if we were to service Nevada, we would have a valve setting prior to entering town in their system. And when their water tower drops in elevation, instead of signaling for their pumps to turn on, it would open the valve. And then the valve would allow the water to fill their tower and we would establish with that valve, a predetermined rate such that this system is designed for it so that it fills their tower rapidly. But it's not like somebody broke the line and has got a fire hose going, you know, because that would lower the pressure and we work that operating pressure out. You have 50, 60 pounds at this point. The EPA requirement is they don't want you to go below 35 pounds operating pressure in a normal day. They don't want you to go below 20 pounds per square inch at any time during the, so that would be with the firefighting and your maximum demand. They don't want that pressure to drop below 20. 35 to me is, I like to be higher and we were actually figuring 45 as to being our low width and I believe we were going to open the valve up for a little over 100 gallon a minute to fill their tower. So if they use 40,000 and divide by 100, 400 minutes, so.
So there's already, there's already then a tower there in Nevada?
Nevada's always had a tower.
Now, if we go north up to Broken Sword, there's no tower up there.
No tower there.
And there's no tower over by Sulphur Springs.
No, but Sulphur could easily be fed off of the North Robinson. And you still, we didn't feel you needed a tower at those elevate, at those locations to operate. If it got to, because of the expense of a tower, if there became a higher demand somewhere for whatever reason, you can actually put a booster pump station in to, you have the volume of water, maybe you just don't have pressure. So you can have a pump and it's on a variable frequency drive, which when there's low demand, it's low speed. If you've got a higher demand, it speeds up to provide that up to the maximum limit. And then you can put in an oversized pressure tank like you have in a house out in the country off of a well. You can put that in the building. We're doing that on a lot of mobile home parks today. Instead of having 10 or 12 pressure tanks in there for their higher demand that the EPA would require, we put a B F D on the motor and then we have one 40 gallon or 100 gallon pressure tank feeding the whole 100 unit of mobile home parks.
That's been more efficient anyways.
Oh, yes.
Up at Crossroads, which the north, what if we got something in there then that would require more water than what is, I mean, they're getting this full service, the same thing Timken and GE are getting now?
Crossroads has a 12 inch line looped through there that they could probably get 4,000 gallon a minute out of if you wanted. We've got Crossroads covered.
So that's covered.
Yeah.
And we didn't have to be certified for a figure of that.
Yeah, we actually ran the water line from, let's say Lawn Avenue up to Crossroads and 12 inch line went through Crossroads and then back down to State Route 98 and tied back into your service there. And now you've even helped that situation with your new plant because you're going to use that 24 inch coming to town as a, as a feed line and you came off with an eight inch and came back up to that railroad track crossing there at 98. And that's going to be a second feed out of the plant. But typically your normal pressure is going to be off of the water towers and we had those looped pretty much previously. And you typically, you don't count on your high service pumps to supply your needs. It's refilling your tanks and stuff like that if you had a high demand.
The area where we have a possibility of putting other industry in is there back behind Walmart. What do we have back in there?
You got a 12 inch line feeding right off your water tower. I don't want to be encouraged to get asked.
Could the Nevada system, if they, their water tower's pretty old, may need replaced at some point, could Visaris system feed Nevada system and completely eliminate Nevada's need for a water tower?
I'm saying the answer is yes, but I would probably need to increase the diameter of the pipe to provide their fire protection that they would want in their town.
I know, I guess as an insurance person, that's why I was looking at the fire protection stuff because that could be another way to help accommodate costs for people getting this new water system.
I'm glad to have insurance guys on this because that's been a big bug of me. My dad doesn't pay any more insurance than I do on his house and he lives out in the country and he's got a volunteer fire department. And how much does an ISO rating actually save if we went from one.
If you go from a five to a three, probably about $200 a year on your home insurance.
There's a lot of factors involved in the rating, but yeah, I mean, there's been savings.
A lot of companies, like one company actually I want to wear an shirt for, they've adopted a new ISO class system where now not only do they look at fire protection, but they also look at water supply source too. So you could be a protection class of seven, but you're a seven X because you have a water source there that they can tie into to put the fire out. So therefore, you know, you're still the same responding, but you have a better water supply to put the fire out. So they've adopted ways like that.
I've tried for years to get a number. That's the first time I've heard a number. Because I often wondered how much the break even point between increased sizing.
Right.
And the cost to the customer on that end to the savings on his personal checkbook on the other side. So, and even the ISO guys wouldn't give me that. When I was doing maps for the ISO people, they wouldn't give it to me.
Roughly, I would say you're looking, I mean, if you can go from a five to a three, somewhere around about $200 depending.
And what is that criteria from a five to a three?
That is your responding fire and then your viable water source for them to use to put the fire out. Those are the two main things.
Which one's better, the five or the three? Which, the three's better?
Yeah, like Gally and right now, they're a protection class three in their town. We're a protection class five here in Visaris.
Why is that? Why is it so much higher?
Because their fire protection over there that they have, the department that they have over there and they, they've done, I forget what it is that they did, but they actually had ISO come in and they updated their ISO rating by doing that.
I wondered because I'm their engineer too.
Level of staff, I mean, level of trucks.
Yeah.
They're the same as we are.
No.
Yeah, they are. Same as we are.
Well, so we need to reevaluate.
There is, there is a difference and I'm trying to remember what it was, but I can't go over.
Because they just got their, they just got their area.
But there is a difference that put them over the top for going to a three, yeah. So I'm not, I can't tell you.
At least I believe I had to do with their department, but I'm not positive on that.
Because I didn't do our system to.
I'd have to dig back in.
Much to share.
I'm sorry.
Jeff, go ahead.
I just see where Tiffin, their rating was just lowered, was in their paper a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
So we can, we should look into that, see if that's something we have to initiate. I know I have something to do with over.
Yeah, most of these, most of these areas we're talking about are going to be in protection class nine and if we, if we kept the, if this is a rural water, drinking water, laundry only, it's not going to affect their ISO rating because we're not doing anything to change how their, their water source for responding to a fire. So it really is going to have an impact on the ISO rating for their insurance rates, but it's more about water quality.
Jeff. Go ahead.
I was looking into residential fire suppression systems and actually they're starting to become more and more like California, the entire state has, if you build a new house, they have to have residential fire suppression in or sprinkler system. And what they do is they put like a 300 gallon tank to hold the water and they have like a two horsepower motor and then they run the lines inside the drywall and, you know, I'm assuming if you were to do that here voluntarily, you could get better insurance rating or better on your homeowner's insurance.
If you have a sprinkler system in your house? Yeah, I mean, yeah, they're going to factor that in.
So that, like the average cost was like $3,000 to put one of these systems in, the one I was looking at. So you wouldn't need this drinking water here. If you wanted to have a sprinkler system in your, your house, you can still do it, have that tank system in. So I don't know if.
Just hoping it'll cut the wires first when they show up.
Right.
Well, it might be.
Well, honestly, the difference you would see though, I mean, the sprinkler systems, fire suppression systems is going to help you, but at the same time, it's not going to give you near the difference that you would see with a better protection by three. And a lot of that, like Andy says, has to do with staffing and.
I have a sprinkler in my little furnace closet and I try to get rid of my little one. They got a sprinkler, one sprinkler head over the furnace. It's all fire drain, it's all around me. I love it.
Okay. Any other questions right now? Okay, I'm going to move on. What's your recommendation? I guess that's where, we're going to go to page two of this. Being ready. The potential, I guess we had talked about once before, the number of customers that are available and the different areas that are available. What, what do we do for our bang of our buck? I mean.
If you were spending your money, where would you go first? Wasn't, isn't it going to be based, sorry?
Go ahead.
Isn't it going to be based on if we, I mean, what do we do if we do the mass mailing to that whole area and people in Sulphur don't run it, Stetzer wants it? You know, how are we going to determine, you know, because there has to be some payback?
We don't have all the information we need on who gets the first water line yet. And I agree with Jeff, we got to do that to see, you know. And I don't know if the one northeast is still on the market yet or whether it's already taken care of and going to be serviced by others. That decision was supposed to have been Friday, last Friday.
They extended it to Friday.
Is this Friday now? Okay. Because if they say they're going to service it, then it's off our, you know, it's going to be erased off of here and I would look seriously at Stetzer. You've got a lot of properties right out into here that can be serviced and I would like to see it get out to pass Parsha and then loop back down into here. You can pick all these up on Ranchwood and stuff in there and, you know, and there again, you're going to have to send mailings to people to see it. We've got people on Crestline Road with no water. They got a tank in their basement that they fill and then pump through their house. I know this, everything east of town geologically has more of a problem with wells than this one. You get out into here, you can drill through limestone and get plenty of hard water. You could drill a bunch of out here all you want and get nothing.
Right.
And I know right out here, a gentleman drilled a well last. And I know right out here, a gentleman drilled a well last week. Can, you can smell it from several hundred feet away with the sulfur. And, you know, it's, another guy ran 1,100 foot from his well to find a spot that he got sweet water to service his house out in this direction, so.
And not necessarily everyone along the way is going to want it.
No.
So, you know, that, that's, that's one of the big considerations. It may look good in terms of numbers, but the number we're most interested in are those that are going to be willing.
In, in running the county system, we have about 180 customers to North Robinson from the edge of town. We picked up a lot of customers, but in the last four years, but not until their well went dry. And then they, they can't get to you fast enough. But if they, typical human nature, I mean, if it's work, why do I want to pay more, you know?
Right.
And the other thing that you need to look at in, in marketing is a lot of these people have their own water softener. They're afraid of paying your bill. But they got their water softener and they're paying 30, 40 bucks a month for the water softener. And so that work, that goes away. You don't need that. Everybody out here has turned, I won't say everybody, because they're still marketing from the softening guys that say that it should be better. But they, you know.
What is the impact on, say, an individual customer? If we're suddenly bringing them fresh water that's already softened and everything else, do they have to do anything inside their home other than disconnect their water? I mean, their pipes and everything should accommodate all this. There's no inside thing that has to be done, you know? That last little $500 thing that drives you nuts when you're doing any kind of a change.
The hookups that we're doing on the county system.
Right.
We take the line, we run it into the building. They have to physically disconnect their well or cistern or whatever device they got in there from it. And it has to be physically totally separated and removed. And we hook up to it, we put the water meter in and that's it. We haven't done anything else. If they want to get rid of their galvanized pipes at that time or something, that's their call. That's, we don't try to.
We don't require that.
We, we don't and I don't, I don't try to force things that I've, you know, I don't believe in some of the things anyway. But I'm not looking for trouble and I'm not looking to take on more. The issue that you have with the rural water is EPA now requires that when you separate the system, they want you, they would prefer that the wells be abandoned. In the past, we have told the people they could keep their other wells and it's disconnected and goes to an outside spigot. They could wish their car water their garden or water their yard. If you now do that, the EPA gives us three options as operators. You make the people put on a backflow device, which if they put a backflow device on, it then becomes a requirement that they have it tested and certified every year. You abandon it totally, fill it, cap it, so it cannot ever be used again. And to abandon the well, there's a procedure that the health department handles, they have permits for that. Or the operator schedules a visit with each of the homes every year to make sure they didn't cheat and hook back up. Well, that isn't going to happen either. So to me, you want to look at, I wouldn't really want to commit to tell the people they could keep their wells for outside use. And I don't, and they're not going to, it's going to be an administrative nightmare to make them submit a backflow test. You have enough problems getting your commercial people to do it, let alone, you know, another thousand customers. So we've had to, we're changing our policy. Unfortunately, my last two were dug wells in North Robinson and they filled them. So I didn't have an issue. And what's the cost to the homeowner for filling in and abandoning a well typically in our own? I couldn't even guess right now. I don't know, I've never had it done and I've never asked.
Grab, just curious.
One at the reservoir that we just had done was about $800. And it just had one pump, pumps on it.
What, the hand?
Yeah, one air crate.
But it's still, you had to pull the casing out and then plug it.
Yeah.
So it's a day with all the equipment, a couple of guys, so it's going to cost you a thousand bucks.
Okay.
The black line, that's not a physical water line, right?
No, that's a water service area. Northern Rural Water has claims to Chatfield, Auburn and Vernon Townships.
So this Friday deadline you were talking about, that was them making a claim to that area?
In Liberty Township.
And then, and who's that claim with? I mean, is it state or?
There isn't a higher revised code section for them to, they're kind of a, even though they're a private water company, they're kind of a, I call it quasi-government and they're regulated by the higher revised code.
If somebody was to make a claim to an area, but then never build into that area, is there like a timeline where it expires and then some other company can apply?
I can't answer you truthfully on that, Kurt. I don't know that detailed law, but I would sure bet that you can't, if you're wanting to service an area, you better be servicing it.
Right. The, the county system, you said something about looping around and tying back into, is there, didn't you say that when you went from one system to another, it should be like a master meter?
Yep.
So is, what's the future of the county system here? Is the city going to be?
I look for the county system to disappear.
And the city to acquire it.
I look for that to happen.
So getting back to it, uh, number one priority, even though we can identify areas that we might want to service, the number one priority, I guess, is mass mailings. I mean, so the mass mailings are what's going to determine really where we go. So when you're saying mass mailings, are you saying, are we going to select a mass mailing area first or are we going to select a mass mailing period? I mean, do we mass mail to, to, you know, certain two areas and, or certain three areas or? I mean, I don't know how, how you make that determination. I mean, yes, okay, that's the priority is, is to go fishing, but.
Right.
If, if I was doing a mass mailing other than the, a funnel to there, I would target the east side because the water quality is less. That would be.
But if we also have legal entities that sit out there, like there is a Nevada, that needs to be.
Oh, yeah, I said other than. Because to me, if they would decide they wanted your water and they didn't want to upgrade their plant again and, and stuff, that's a pretty enticing route to run for, because you've got 40,000 gallons a day immediately because they're all on public water. It's just their, their source water is going to change. So it's not like you wait 10 years for them all to hook up. The day that water's there, you've got that customer base helping to recharge your funds.
But I think we would be remiss if we didn't reach out, like you're looking at that southern group down below, south of town and, and east of town. There, there, there are quite a few out there that I think need, also need attention too.
And this blue here that you see sneaking in, that's a service area that I have on another map for Galian to come in. And part of what I'm looking at, there's a U.S.-Canadian treaty on no net loss of water to the Great Lakes. And so that's the reason I show that boundary. So far, all your water that came south got picked up in sewers and went back north. So there's really no net loss. If we go, I, due diligence says we make one call to the Department of Natural Resources. The director of ODNR controls those issues. And I know Crestline has permission slip because they pull out of Ontario, they have wells in Ontario, which are on the Ohio River side of the line. And their plant then sits on 314 on the Sandusky, Lake Erie side and then comes back. So they have an agreement. And Akron, Canton, over into that area, there's been a lot of court cases on that magic line. But that would be one thing that we would do. But I don't, regionalization of water and sewer is very favorable today. So, and it's going to be a, a minor usage in the whole scope of things, so. And it only makes sense to me.
Okay, go ahead. Yes.
Is, is it possible that the city can, you know, start building out water lines? Like is their budget already a little bit extra money? The city can gradually at their own expense start expanding this thing? Are we talking about putting like a bond on people's property taxes? Or is that even, not even been discussed yet?
I don't think we're that far yet.
Well, the Nevada thing, I was kind of thinking, like if, if residents of Nevada wanted to not go through the expensive building plan and they said, we want Bussier's to be our supplier. They could put some sort of property tax bond, I don't know how that works, on for their whole village to cover that line running into their village all the way from wherever we're at now. And then that way it doesn't impact the cost of, you know, Bussier's expense because they're paying for it. And then the side benefit to that is every house passed along that route basically could become a serviceable address to the city of Bussier's water system. And, uh, which basically Bussier's didn't have to incur any cost to build because the residents of Galian built that, paid to build that line.
But if I'm Nevada and I paid for that line, I'm collecting that money. That's what Winford had when they put theirs in. They had a 10-year agreement, I believe, that they collected all the taps and funds off of that when it went in because Winford paid for that.
Or passed that 10 years on the Winford line?
Probably, so, yeah, yeah. But we didn't have to get anybody tapped.
Nobody tapped that the whole way out there?
There's only three, I was going to say, three, four homes. But no, they did not.
How much service area, like in between the green with this, the smaller?
I said you could do that. You can fill all those gaps in.
With this six-inch line you're talking about, so, so we.
You can double the service and out here and the water's running downhill this way because this is, yeah, that's the Sandusky coming down there, that's the Broken Sword there. It's all running down, so pressures will be maintained. It's kind of unique for us that it works that way.
So we can make the whole county green, other than those other areas or serviced by other companies with this six-inch kind of thing you've got going here?
You also have to look at the logistics of it though. I mean, there's a lot of farmland between houses out there. You're going to be running a, a lot of dollars worth of water line to get to a $34 water bill.
Rural, rural water, if they don't have five customers in a mile, they don't want you. That was a number that they've determined in their administration.
Yeah, these areas in, in the.
Yeah.
They're going to be pretty sparse.
Yeah. The only way to me, when you run out 98, is getting close, is the caveat of 100 sitting on the tail end. If you didn't have the 100 sitting on the tail end, maybe it doesn't rate as high a thought. I don't, you know.
And what, it's not 100, what if it's?
Yeah, and I would be happy if you, you probably get 40. You know, like you said, half of them. I'm not sure because I, I do know not every well in sulfur is bad because I ran the well for the school and it fed five other homes off of it and there was all sorts of water coming out of it and there was no issues with it. So don't think that the name of the village means that's what the well is.
Not everybody in sulfur water.
And, and again, as long as people have, typically have water coming out of their spigots, they're not going to want to pay you. And I believe a week ago, they had like 31 people who wanted to sign up. So, yeah, it isn't, we cannot anticipate having that. Like I said, I got 80 in North Robinson now, but I probably added 10 or 12 customers in the last six years.
How many, how many residents are there in North Robinson?
Oh, if you take, uh, let's see, 100 times two and a half.
I thought you said you had 180 in North Robinson.
No, that's the whole line.
The line out there.
Yeah. There's about half of them west of the landfill and a half, the other half is east and south.
Okay, but that includes school out there, both schools?
Yeah, yeah, we have the school. School doesn't use as much, that's part of the problem. We, uh, we actually took their four-inch meters out and put two-inch meters in so we could register all the flows. It's very critical that you don't oversize your plumbing. And the meters especially because they couldn't measure any flows less than three and a half gallon a minute. Well, all night long, you have a leaky toilet. And that leaky toilet would use as much as 10 homes in a day. And it wasn't getting built. That, that's, it's that critical to watch those things. And it first got me, I didn't pay that much attention like everybody else. I'd put big pipes in and I'm an engineer, I, you know, I like them bigger and better, uh, till I hit Delco. Uh, Delco wanted $17,000 extra to go from a two-inch to a four-inch tap. Extra.
Extra.
I paid, in Cardington, I paid $40,000 for a tap from a home that had an eight-inch line so we could have a fire protection in it. That's the real world when you go south of us. It, it's that, and we don't want that. I mean, that's not our desire, is it? But, so, and as we come in with those higher prices, the architects and the engineers say, we always have to relook and do we really need that big a line? Is that what the hydraulics dictate to us? And Delco also on the campgrounds, I wanted a six-inch line and they, or a four-inch line running all the way back. They said, no, you only get a two. We didn't design that line for any bigger. You get a two and you live with it. If you need to do anything else, you take it, have it on your site. Yep. So, you know, it's, that's their concept and that's the other side. So we don't just run big for the, the maximum dream.
Right. Well, I'm going to do some direction here. As far as, as far as Nevada, I think we can, I think as a group, maybe we can decide that Nevada will be left up to Mayor Reeser. Being that, that, that'll be have to be a negotiation and he has to do on his, his behalf with the mayor of Nevada.
Well, we'll make some contact.
And fill them out. And as far as us doing any proposals to them, that'll be up to him. I mean, uh, I mean, as far as like a mass mailing, that's up to, that's, that's really no mass mailings involved with us. That's strictly, that's strictly on his behalf.
Because they might just say no.
And that's, that's true. And so. But even, even before we can even, I, I realize it says sulfur springs is phase one and, uh, you know, it gives these other phases. What we really have to do is, I don't mean to cut everybody off, but we're going to have to, we got one more meeting this Friday. But I would like to be able to introduce and talk a little bit about tap fees because to be a part of the mass mailing, we have to be able to know what our costs might would be or will, will be on, on everything that's involved so we can actually put the mass mailing in and be, you know, correct to the, to the people that's out there in the rural areas. I, I printed off an old, old newspaper here. Took it off of, we would, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'll wait, I'm sorry.
Well, you can go ahead and tell me. I mean, it says that the three-quarter inch pipe.
Did you give him a copy of that, please?
Yes.
Yeah, I've got that.
Okay, okay.
That's just what's in our books right now.
That's what's in our books right now. Says three-quarter inch pipe, $575 for the tap plus $10 per foot. Says three-quarter inch pipe, five hundred and seventy-five dollars for the tap, plus ten dollars per foot over forty feet. Just to clarify it, you know, there's a tap, say, there's a tap going down a north-south road, and they say the tap is on the west side of the road, and the resident lives on the east side of the road. It's, the tap, to get it to the, from the west side of the road to the east side of the road, isn't necessarily the, the resident. Isn't it the city's responsibility to get it on that east side of the road?
It's your call, it's your ordinances.
Well, I mean, I, I-
The county charges a thousand-dollar flat fee. We furnish the meter and the sleeve and a shut-off, and we do no work.
So then-
The homeowner pays for everything.
So they're paying either to, they're paying, they're paying to bring a company in outside of W. Bussiris to either bore underneath the road or clear cut.
I prefer to do away with the word "tap fee." I prefer to call it "availability of service," and then you guys decide.
Boy, that sounds like blaming bull rushes.
Yeah, but we don't do, and we don't make the taps. Because, we're too small, we can't do it. So, and there's other people who are getting out of that business because of staffing levels, so they just don't do them. They have an inspector that watches to make sure it's done right, and you have your guys who are permitted to do it. Not everybody with a backhoe can do it. And we make them have insurance and everything first, because if they blow up one of my lines and I shut send a school home, uh, there's some issues there, uh, but-
One thing we had to discuss, if the water line, say, goes out this road, it, does, who determines whether it's going out the east, west, the east side, the west side, the north side, the south side? And we don't interfere with the roadway itself? It's beside the roadway in a right-of-way? Is that where it goes?
Yeah, that's, it's a designer issue, and the city's issue, and agreeing, just like we do every other water line that we run. Typically, you do not need any easements from private individuals if you stay in the public right-of-way, as long as you get the permit from the entity that controls that public right-of-way. You can, you don't automatically have the right to do that, you gotta go through their rules. I, I get approvals from townships, county, and state, uh, based on that.
So they all come into play, the township, county, and state?
Whoever have jurisdiction over that right-of-way. It is nice, and I know rural water looks at it a lot of times, too, if you can dig on the backside of the right-of-way, and if they give you an easement for a buck to run along their property, it's a little cheaper because you're outside the road right-of-way. But then when they try to hold you up for ransom, when you get to their property line, rural water, you'll see them duck in and go, and then go back out and around for the people who want thousands of dollars or their retirement check for their agreement. But, so you, all that, that's, that's an ongoing, every, every water line.
Well, I mean, just, we're just trying to think of all the things that are gonna pop up that, that, uh, we, we should really know before we-
But we use it, just like the line that we prepared for you on the Lincoln Highway, where we took it to the county engineer's office, and he requested a couple tweaks, and we made that. And we did it for ODOT over on sixty-one in Crestline. They wanted, uh, markers put up along the way. That was, but it's pretty much cut and dried how it's gonna happen.
Kirk. The rural water came down Cary Road, real close to my parents' house, and they had, they didn't take anything in anybody's house. It's the con, the, the person to own the house, if you wanna be on that water, you had to pay some contractor to have the line already sitting out there, and it was coiled up at the end of the road. And then, when they tapped the line, if you tapped it at the time that they installed it, it was a better rate than if you got on it at a later point in time. And I think they put the meters in bulbs out by the road, so people couldn't tamper with them in their house.
And they'd use a charge for them.
Maybe that's what, my fault.
Well, there's a, there's a issue, and if you wanted to, and I actually talked with John about whether he wanted to have meter pits at the road instead of backing into the house. There's advantages to that, especially for houses far off the road with long services, that they pay for the leaks and the long services, not you. If it's metered, uh, radio reads, you don't have so far from to reach out. You know, there's those issues that are worth looking into. And a lot of places, I have, uh, I think Delco is pretty much everything's an outside meter. You never need access to your house that way.
And an outside meter is a meter pit.
Pit.
But then you probably have to pump them.
Nope. Do you have radio reads?
So the radio reader meter is-
Yep, yep.
So, wait a minute, so, will you get anything to add to it, or can you tell us any of your desires or wishes, or inform us or educate us, let's put it that way? Anything?
Far as-
Anything about water lines, uh, what your preferences are when you're running down the road, um, tap fees, uh-
The tap fees is one thing I think we need to address, because I figured it up, uh, when Jerry left. I figured it up, and actually, if you figure in labor and the cost of the backhoe and the new meters, we're losing money on a tap, when we do a tap. We actually lose money. Um, and then if you do, if you do a long service, then you're actually losing more money because we're using more copper. So the tap fees, I think, do need addressed.
Regardless of-
Regardless of what we do.
With this project, yeah.
But just for the city itself.
Yeah.
And as far as, as a tap fee, it would be across the board, and it wouldn't be, there would be not necessarily any incentive. I mean, uh, the tap fee inside the city limit will be the same as the tap fee outside the city limits. Or is there an incentive package that you, if you live within the annexed area, that you pay a different tap fee versus a tap fee outside the, the annexed area? I've just muddied the waters, but-
I did call surrounding communities, um, Upper Sandusky, Galleon, Willard, Shelby, um, I think that was it. Most of them, but I have the paper in front of me, most of them do have a separate out-of-town versus in-town tap fees.
I also think Galleon charges a frontage foot in addition to their tap fee.
Galleon, when I talked to them, they don't, they don't even do a tap fee. They didn't have a tap fee for anything below two-inch.
Didn't they do it, Tom, why did they just decree it?
Well, the proposal on the table right now is seventeen hundred dollars. I know, but I had asked for prices, uh, something about, uh, you can buy schools of, of line in a hundred-foot increments. Then the plastic itself is minimal. Forty bucks for a hundred feet of three-quarter inch pipe, but then when you start running into problems, is they called it something called a cork stop valve for forty bucks, and then some type of saddle or something? That's some, some type of saddle valve that goes on top of that.
You got your pipe, and the saddle goes around it to clamp, and then you drill through it to make your tap. And then the cork goes inside that, and then you shut it off, pull your drill out, and then you can hook the line and then your curb box to it. That's, that's-
And, and the, the total added up to three hundred and fifty bucks for the material, but that wasn't, that wasn't the labor. That was just the materials, the three hundred and fifty bucks to have the individual be able to-
Is that the meter, too?
No, and that didn't include the meter. I, I, or did that include the meter, I don't know. I was, when I was, when I was calling on it. I don't know, I couldn't tell you. Go ahead, Kirk.
This is more of a question Lynn might know. The, the people on Stutsor, or not Stutsor, Beach Grove Road between New Plant and the sheriff's office, I had heard some of them requested to be on that line, and they were told that the city didn't wanna let anybody on that line, because they were worried when they tapped that it was gonna crack it.
Talk to the guy, John. I think that's wrong, Kirk.
What's that?
The guys on Beach Grove are hooking into your line, your new water line, aren't they?
I've got one that's tapped on now, the tap is already made.
Yeah. He's saying you guys prohibited it from all.
No, I didn't prohibit it. What I did was I, my preference was that we waited until the twenty-four inch was in, because if something did happen in the tap process, we had to shut down the eighteen inch, that's our only feed in the town. So I did prohibit it, I just, I'm taking precautionary measures.
And the twenty-four inch is going to be addressed here this spring?
Yes, I've told, I've told people that I'm gonna, in the spring, once the twenty-four's up and running, that we'll go ahead and start putting taps on Beach Grove.
Okay, 'cause I, I know I've been contacted by people on Beach Grove Road, and they were wanting to know what was, you know, they, they already run their water line down and getting down to the road, and they were wanting to know why it's taken so long.
Honestly, I don't foresee any problems, but I'd hate for something to happen, and we have to shut down that eighteen inch and lose our feed in the town.
Is that nine hundred, C nine hundred or nine oh nine?
It's duct lined.
Oh, it's duct lined?
But it's, it's not the high-end ductile, it's the low-end ductile.
Okay.
I can't remember, uh, class-
Fifty-two, fifty-one?
I can't remember the class, but it's the lower-class duct lined. Now, like I said, I don't perceive problems, but-
We've had issues with C nine hundred plastic pipe and split, and we typically don't use it anymore, because if you hit it, it'll shatter.
Yep.
If you take the nine oh nine plastic, you can hit it with a backhoe, you can bend it, and it won't break. You can take teeth and hit it, and it won't break.
Yep.
So that's what we've been using lately.
I just, I just, I brought that up just as a precautionary measure. I'd hate to-
Doomsday there.
Cause a bigger problem.
Well, I, my wife calls me a pessimist, but I, I like to call it a realist, because I know what, everything looks good on paper, but then you get in the real world, then it, everything can-
We're not gonna put you in sales.
Okay, getting back to the taps. How was a tap? I mean, Lynn is telling me that, uh, when a tap is done on the water line, it's not necessarily, who's gonna do it? I mean, is it still gonna be done by the city? I mean, that's an administrative call there, I guess, is will it still be done by the city? Or will it be done by a private contractor?
Well, I think we would take it over, and we would do it.
That would have, we'd have a good quality control.
I think that makes sense.
Does that necessitate from Lynn's issues of having someone come in that maybe doesn't cause a-
Well, I don't let them, I turn some down.
Right, right.
But, and also, you guys have the department to do that. The county system has two part-time employees. We have no backhoes or anything. I actually contract with you guys today. So.
So as far as the tap, then, that, that, that part, that fifty percent of it's already solved, and if we're gonna keep it in-house as quality control and doing the tap, has there ever been done, how many hours it takes a normal tap? Well, only thing, I, I realize that, that seventeen hundred dollars might be good, might be bad. I'm just trying to find a happy, uh, line somewhere. I, I know you're, I heard the, the numbers were two thousand for rural water. If you tap in on the day that they would like to have you tap in, three thousand dollars if you don't tap in by the later date. And, uh, so I, what I was looking at is, is just justification of the seventeen hundred dollars. I mean, yeah, I know we're really low, but how low is really low? I mean, what I, I'm just having to, trying to find that, you know, that, that fee again, that-
And the other thing yet is if you go with the outside meter pits, you're gonna have another few hundred dollars just in materials.
And we have to provide that if they, who pays for it?
You have been providing all the materials for the taps so far to the curb box. So in this case, you would provide it to the meter pit, and then from the pit to the house would be the homeowner.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
John, you just put in the budget for some new meters this year. Do you remember how much a meter?
I think they're about two hundred and sixteen dollars.
For the meter, the, just a meter?
Or the meter head?
Just a meter. Well, the, the old meters had a separate casing and a head. This one, they're all built together. Then you have a transmitter that's, um, the transmitter is separate.
How much is that?
Um, transmitter is part of the two sixteen.
Okay.
I just figured up a rough, a rough number. Just material alone for a tap is about five hundred and sixty bucks.
That including the meter?
That includes the meter. That, that, but that doesn't include a meter pit.
Do those meters, will they be working a pit, or they gotta be waterproof and sealed?
They, to my knowledge, it will work in a pit.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, you know, the reason we decided on seventeen hundred dollars was, you know, was a competitive, um, you know, there's, there was a competitive issue there. The other thing, too, I mean, we, we still need to, we're, we're taking, making quite an investment. And so, additional money we would make would help us defray some of the cost of, you know, going out there. So we figure, if the cost is eight hundred thousand to go out there, and we get, I'm just gonna say eighty people to sign up, and, you know, we make a thousand dollars roughly on each one. We're afraid to cost by ten percent.
Lynn, you mentioned over in Galleon, I think you said that they had a frontage fee as well as a, a tap fee. What is a frontage fee? I mean, what, what, how do they define that?
They used to evidently, I, when, uh, twenty-five years ago, they looped, we looped the town over there. We grew it up and interconnected, and, and there was a substantial cost of that. It was a twelve-inch loop around town. And, uh, a lot of that was outside the city limits even. And, um, they charged, let's say, I don't know what the number was for sure, but I think they came up with a charge, it cost them twenty bucks a foot to lay the line at that time. And so they said, "Okay, if you tap on, you're paying ten dollars a foot for the area, and that covered the cost of your pipe." And the guy on the other side paid his ten dollars a foot, and then the fund was replenished, so to speak, that way. Uh, and they were doing that, and any, any home that never had water before paid a frontage foot assessment, I think, was how that was working. So that they could recoup, now, you, you still had to carry the debt, but it, it was just in there, in your charges, and that's how they collected money, and it went into the, the water fund.
Isn't that pretty much what killed the county, you know, when they wanted to run water off Stutsor?
Well, they were also-
It was like the sky was falling, and you're gonna charge me for frontage.
Yeah, and they were also, I think, trying to tell them that everybody needed to hook up a foot. You can't make anybody hook up to water. Sewer, if they're within two hundred foot, you can make them hook up. Water, you can't, they can go out, you got a water line in the front, they can drill well.
Okay, now, go ahead and tell me what a pit cost, and how much, how many man-hours do we, that's a thing, hook up on the worst-case scenario?
I don't know what pits run, because I've never put one in. Do you know what Bob charged down there, water?
I'm trying to think, we did two of them. I'm just thinking of eighteen-inch pipe, eighteen-inch storm sewer pipe, so what they are with a, a lid on top.
Yeah, those ones that Bob had are, I mean, they're a lot nicer, I mean, I don't know how much they cost.
You'd have to get that from HD Supply. That's where you got it.
We can ask him.
I'm saying five hundred bucks or more.
Probably. And then yours, as far as labor goes, I mean, if it, if it's a short, if it's a short tap, it, we can generally do it in a matter of a couple hours. If it's a long, we gotta push under the road, we could be there all day. We've done taps where it's taken us all, four guys, all day. Because we will push it, and the push rod will bounce off of a rock, and it'll come up. I've seen them come up in the middle of the road before. And we'll have to pull it all back, readjust everything, shoot in a, shoot in a new hole, and, I mean, we've done it three times in a day before we got, before we were able to get it deep enough, and they came out right. There's other times when it'll go- There's other times when it'll go about four foot deep and then we gotta, then we have to dig, go to the other side of the road and dig four foot deeper just to find the, the rod. And it's just too many variables. We don't know what's in the road. You hit a rock and it can go up or down or left or right. It's just, like I said, we've gone all day before.
But it's gonna take somewhere typically between a half and a whole day.
Yeah.
For one meter pit?
One tap, a long service, a long tap.
Under the road.
So, could we differentiate between a long tap and a short tap?
I would.
So, if we have a, a short tap means the line's on your side of the road, a long tap means it's on the other side? Okay.
So, does these private companies distinguish that? Because I, we're laying, you know, they don't, they, they just, I was gonna say, because you know, you might be shooting yourself in the foot just because now you're going to create two things. It's like, gee.
So, have the directional boring rigs too that is back over. It's a lot easier than...
I can add something.
And I, we, we just tried something different and of course, we weren't able to get it to work on this last, this last one where we were replacing the lead line under the road. But I talked to the cities in Sandusky about what they do if this process didn't work. I said, what do you guys do? You guys push it with hydraulic machines? And no, we open cut the road. So, with open services, they, they told me they open cut the road if they can't get this to work.
I bring a guy in with a directional machine. We just did a tap. They directional boarded at North Robinson. They dug the hole, pushed the rod and connected it and, and they were out of there with ten o'clock.
Yeah, but at the cost of, how much does that machine cost?
The owner paid for it.
The what?
The owner paid for it.
Okay, to just rent it?
The owner hired a contractor that owned the machine and he came in and it took him an hour. Directional boring machines are nice. And they also have a transmitter on the end to solve his issues because when you go across the road following it, you, it tells you how deep it is too. And then they can sit there. It's got a beveled edge on it. And when you're going, they turn, every so often they turn it, so it keeps it kinda going straight. If it starts dropping because it hit the rock, they can back up, turn it. They know what angle they're going, whether they can go up, down, right, or left. I directional boarded an eight-inch, four hundred feet under a US forty and came out within about three inches of where we wanted to be. So, but...
But they use, they use the directional bore when they board for the water line coming in, didn't they? When we went down to Old Thirty and went, they, that's what they used to have.
It, it's just you guys, you, you don't have that machine and it does cost, but you take, and I'm almost like you Bruce, flat fit either side of the road. It's gonna make it so much easier and somebody isn't gonna be mad because you didn't run the line on their side of the road.
I would, I would wanna tell one person on one side, one place that the other guy...
Go ahead, Kirk.
As far as the tap fee we're being raised for people in town, I, how many taps do we do a year in town? Roughly.
New taps?
Yeah.
Last year, in two thousand seventeen, did three.
Okay, so that, the cost of that, in my opinion, even if we're losing money on it. The, the tap fee going along these rural routes, I understand it being higher because you gotta pay for the line extension, but we're not extending lines in town, so I don't think the tap fee for in-town people needs to be raised quite as much. I mean, I can understand raising it a little bit, but to make it the same as for people out in rural areas that you're doing an extension on?
I, I don't think that was the, I just was, when we go out of town, that's what we were looking at. In town, I think would have to be a different price. And that's my opinion. I don't know what, it's up to these guys to decide that, but that, this was the out-of-town fee we were looking at.
Well, I'll tell you what, I guess I got a, a couple of requests. I, I just would like, if we're actually worried about losing money, then let's, let's still find the cost of, okay, the five hundred and sixty dollars, find the price of the pit and find out what the labor is. And who knows, maybe seventeen hundred dollars isn't even a hell of a... I mean, I gotta look at it that way then. Now, you know, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. I was just gonna say, I was just guessing. I was looking on my phone and trying to find out, find out the price on something like that. And the only thing I can think of is about five hundred and six hundred bucks depending on the size of the line. And that was just a start.
But it'd be easy enough, John, if you can call HD Supplies Brian and he'll just pull them off the list. He's your regular, one of your regular suppliers. Or you can call the other one.
I guess that's the idea of how the two meetings, I mean, this, this is kinda like we've been digging one. And hopefully this coming Friday, we'll make a decision because we gotta hurry up and get on board and send and everything up. Do you have any questions, concerns, ideas?
Well, at the moment, the main thing I'm looking at is, you know, the, you know, you've got the income coming in from the tap fees. I think the critical piece of this is how many accounts are you actually gonna pick up along the route of where we're looking to expand? Because, you know, ultimately that's gonna decide whether or not, where, how many years it's gonna take to break even on this up to eight hundred thousand dollars expenditure. And if it's gonna be a thirty-year turnaround on it, you gotta think as to whether that makes sense financially or not. But that's about, that's about where I'm at on it.
Yeah, Lynn?
I, the question I wanted to raise on this page of your notes. I still think your cost is wrong. An introductory rate of point one four nine, fourteen point nine cents per gallon. I think you...
I meant, I meant point one four, zero one four nine, yeah.
Thank you.
Point zero.
It should be a penny and a half a gallon. Not fourteen cents a gallon, fifteen cents a gallon. Jeff was trying to get it breaking even.
I didn't take this.
Somebody's breaking even.
I would put the dollar and then the zero point zero one four nine in there.
That's still a lot cheaper than Gatorade, milk.
Anybody that, yeah, drinks four-dollar coffee, drinks, drinks sixteen ounce per buck, you know, shouldn't play.
Uh, no, I, I was able to ask most of my stuff first, but thank you.
Dan?
Yeah, he's a quiet guy. He's a quiet guy over there.
No, I'm, I'm not. You'll hear, you'll, you'll hear from me.
Did I have to assess?
No, I think they did an excellent job today of addressing a lot of the issues.
I have this one too, Mr. Chairman. I will be here Friday.
Okay.
I'll be in Florida.
Mr. Chairman?
Lucky though.
We had yourself. You know, the, the reason we're talking about zero, it's point zero one four nine per gallon, which would be, it wouldn't apply to the, to the village of Nevada because they have infrastructure and that would be a separate deal. Just wanna let, you know, let you know that because that, that's a different circumstance completely.
I would think you'd need to negotiate something with them like you did the county.
Right.
When you have that. You're just a follower.
And once you negotiate it, then, then you'll pay us.
Then we would come back, yeah. If they're interested, we're not gonna get sure they're interested. We're just made the initial contact.
Very minimal and not with the new mayor.
Okay.
So, they'll be shocked?
They shouldn't be shocked to hear it come up because I did go to a meeting over there. Actually, I was wearing the county hat at that time and I went to all the townships and let them know that we were considering it because that was right after, um, well, you guys had also changed, allowed your ordinance to allow this to even be considered. And so, then we, we could talk and I was also, we had to also sign the county contract prior to that, which also gave us the right to go to areas not presently served by the city. But economics weren't, you know, good for the commissioners at that time and I think it's better handled here.
So, that was the conversation in the bay?
No, it was with some of the council and stuff, but that mayor is no longer in office.
Okay.
Okay. Any?
No, I don't have anything else. I, I just, you know, we just have to figure out what we wanna put in that letter if that's what we're gonna do. And I think when we come back Friday, I'll have John get all those costs.
And is there something that maybe you could provide us a little bit? I mean, kind of like a framework of what the letter would be and you should, or can I plug the numbers in?
Yeah.
And then I'll open it up to the, did I have any more?
No.
Okay, then I'm gonna...
Does anybody have like a ballpark figure of how much per mile it actually costs to run? Maybe John's got a better idea.
Well, I think Lynn knows.
Okay.
Well, it's somewhere between thirty and fifty dollars a foot, I'm thinking.
Okay.
Based on what we got.
Yeah, I'm just on the ballpark.
Yeah, I was thinking.
I'm not gonna say, oh, you're, you know, I realize you're on in the stuff.
Yeah, I know we had, yeah. And then it's gonna be some issues, you know, there again, based on everything else, but we're, we're getting there. We're compiling this data, the, the numbers that we need and then we can actually tweak the flows. Because this was done, obviously, in the office without field work because no use doing all that.
Go ahead, Kirk.
Are we still going with the one and a half times cost for people on it outside the city limits or what, what cost?
Well, I still think that's part of the discussion we'll have Friday about if we wanna progressively get them there, you know, we, we might, it's, it's up to this room.
Penny and a half rate is below that.
Yes.
To entice them.
Yeah, and maybe it's a two or three-year plan that, hey, we're gonna get you here, but then when we get to year three, we could get the penny and a half like everybody else is paying outside the city.
Well, when I lived on Mount Zion Road, I was paying twenty dollars for water softener. I own the softener, but if I rented one, I was gonna have like fifteen, twenty dollars there. And when I moved in town, my, my water's only twenty, so I'm saving money and I got better water.
It, it's the, probably the biggest one we're gonna face. And based off of my conversation with the residents of Upper Springs, they signed up for it, but it was the cost factor for a lot of people to pay that money upfront.
Your face was drawing well.
I, I understand that, but I'm just telling you what she told me and, you know, that's why we were looking to maybe different options that they can do and trying to entice them to sign up.
And you got the electric of the well pump running.
All right, well, we're gonna, we're gonna cut it off at that point. It's, uh, I can't remember.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. And it's, I, I was just hoping to, to make sure that if anyone had had any questions, that we could ask questions today and hopefully hammer something out this Friday. Okay?
Thank you.
So, two twenty-four.
Nope.
I said, you said, you said anytime, so that's Tuesday, right?
No, I already told you we'd call you. I have my laptop. I actually have my phone and I've got my laptop so I can take emails and stuff.
Did you turn your phone on in the, in the plane now?
Huh?
Are you driving or?
Oh, we're driving.
Oh, you should've never told us that.
I just leave a couple days earlier and then I drive because it actually, the airfare and everything's cheap. But my rental car costs more than my airfare. So.